We have audio on.
Lights are up, yep.
And participants online hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, all right, ready? And I think we are ready.
All right, all right, good evening, everybody, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Sunnyside City Council regular meeting for today, Monday, November 10, 2025. For the record, we have four council members present. We are, Deputy Mayor Galvan has asked for an excused absence this evening, and he's not able to be here. If there's no objection from council, we can grant him an excused absence.
No objection.
Hearing no objection, okay. Council Vasquez is en route. She is going to try to join via Zoom, but she's also driving, so I would encourage her to not do that.
She's online now.
She is online now? Okay, perfect, so Council Vasquez is on via Zoom.
Yes, I'm connected.
And I have not heard from Council Fausto, so we can give her a few minutes to arrive, or we can then revisit at the end of the meeting, if that's okay with council?
Yes, and I'm here, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you, councilor.
Yes, so I'm connected through my phone, but I should be arriving here soon.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
No objection to your second question.
All right, thank you, councilor.
If, if the counselor has not requested an absence, if she doesn't show up, then it's an unexcused.
An unexcused absence, that's correct. All right, the next item on the agenda is agenda approval. And council, I'm going to suggest that we pull one, and I just have to find it. There we go, item E, Sunnyside Arts Commission request for direction. They are requesting direction from our city clerk, who is not here this evening, and so we are unable to provide them that direction, so. It is item E, Sunnyside Arts Commission request for direction. It's been pulled on, oh, here it is.
There it is, E.
E. I said E, I said E in English.
You did, pardon me.
All right, is there any objection to pulling that for this evening?
No, no.
All right, hearing none, we will remove that from the agenda. Any other suggestion, changes, additions to the agenda for this evening? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve, I'll second.
All right, motion by Council Hancock, second by Council Ripley to approve the agenda as presented with the removal of item E. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none, Council Hancock?
Yes.
Council Ripley?
Yes.
Council Vasquez?
Yes.
Council Hart?
Yes.
I two vote yes, motion passes, thank you. All right, do we have somebody here for the invocation this evening? All right, I'd like to ask that, everybody, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, I just want to thank you for the opportunity of being here and for each person in here tonight. Lord, I pray for the protection over our law enforcement and our firefighters. Lord, I pray for the people of Sunnyside and that whatever choices are made tonight, not only are what is in their best interest, but is what you have in your plan for us. And I just pray that you will provide peace and unity tonight amongst everybody, and just give them wisdom and sense of, and a sense of calmness. I pray all these things in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Ms. Hector, could you get me the sign up sheet, please? Thank you, sir. All right, next on our agenda is public comments. Citizens are advised that they must limit their remarks to the council to three minutes. Council may refer items to staff to review and/or research presentation at a future meeting. And please remember, council members don't necessarily respond at this moment to public comments, but we definitely take notes and are listening. And the first name on my list is Tom Dolan. Mr. Dolan, please approach your microphone, state your name and city of residence, and then you make your comments.
Tom Dolan, Sunnyside. I wanted to talk about Public Works. I was driving through the area where they just fixed some pipes, and what a fabulous job they did on those streets. And then I got to talking with Jaime, and he told me some things about that guy that I didn't know. And I thought, man, that guy's doing a great job here. I mean, he had everything already, he had sizes and lengths and how much gravel and all this stuff already, which that was pretty awesome to hear all that stuff. So I'm really impressed with the job you're doing and the job Jaime does, and all of my former students do there on Public Works, so I want to give you a little shout out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next name on my list is Jim Stevens.
Jim Stevens, Sunnyside. One other thing I wanted to talk about first was the tax. Opposed to that tax, may not be much, but everybody's struggling, the businesses are struggling, even though it's a small amount. We had a $3 million mystery loss in our community, and nobody could find it, and we didn't do a forensic file or forensic audit to find it, which I find unacceptable. And they still haven't found it, as far as I know. And so here we have $3 million that our board of directors is unable to have staff come up with the answers, and yet we're going to tax the citizens to make up for some other deficits or loss of income. I don't think that's, I think that's bad business. I, the other one was on the investigation that was done about Mike Gonzalez. And so Mike asked to come to my office, and he came to my office, and we spent about 20 minutes together. And he said, I heard Teresa Hancock's after me. And he went on for at length about it. And I said, well, I think what you ought to do is get the council together, appropriate staff members, maybe some community members, and sit around the table, and let's get every, let's get this team on one page together. He didn't do that, but during the investigation, they said here, in support of his allegations against Teresa Hancock, he reported receiving the following from community members, and there were several community members in there, and one of them was Dr. Stevens, that told him, I'm hearing, he quoted saying, he said, that I said, I'm hearing Teresa is coming after you. That is one big damn lie. And then here it says, well, I don't like what Teresa said because it makes me look like a liar. Well, that's exactly what he is. Now, I don't know how many other things this guy's lying about. I supported Mike when he first came here. I thought he was the best man, over and over again, and I really like this guy. And now he turns around doing this, and there's some other things that they just aren't matching up. And so he's gone, that's okay, I want this changed. This is a, this is false, my name's in it. And then I saw a, for lack of a better word, a publication by LeVos down in Pasco. I think that's the name of the newspaper, it's one of his buddies. And he quoted, he referred to this when he was trying to bastardize me, for whatever reason, trying to make me look at it like I'm a racist or some doggone thing. And so these are some of his Pasco buddies, some of Mike's Pasco buddies from the past, evidently. So I want, I called the attorney, Timothy O'Leary, I believe that's his name, and he apologized for not calling me ahead of time to verify that this was true. So at any rate, I want this changed. And so I called to talk to Jim, but I haven't received a call back. And we can chat, I left a message, but nobody called me back. Wasn't you, but your staff member.
When, when was that, excuse me, not to interrupt?
I didn't understand.
When, when did you call, Mr. Stevens?
Last week.
Weird, I'll give you a call.
Okay, thanks. And so anyway, whatever we have to do to correct that, I would appreciate it. Just thought these are things that council ought to know, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the following. Approved payroll vouchers numbers 14349 through 14601 and wire transfers as listed for $666,498.13 for the period ending November 10, 2025. Claim vouchers, approved claim voucher numbers 14267 through 14401 and wire transfers as listed for $547,312.08 for the period ending on November 6, 2025. And then for information only, our budget position as of October 2025. Council members, is there any item that you'd like to pull for question? Yes, Council Ripley?
Oh, let's see, 14437, 11525. I don't think I wrote down the, the check number. It was for Garrison Law Offices. And the other one was 14448, and I did get the check number on that, 112922. And that was Educational Radio, KDNA, Community, Anti-Opioid Campaign.
Okay. Council Hancock?
I want to pull all the payroll vouchers for the fire department and discuss the reasons why those are on there.
All right, anyone else? Right, Council Ripley, go ahead, Council Hart.
One thing tonight, I know that the, I'm sorry, I know that the budget position as of October 25 is in here for information only, but considering the fact that tomorrow night, we're going to be talking about budget going into the next year, I'd kind of like to have just a short preview of what the budget as of October 2025 is right now. Just, just a couple of sentences. I know we can read it, but I'd like to hear it verbally from our, our city finance director over there.
Are you able to give a quick summary this evening?
Well, I'm not sure that's under the consent.
No, I don't think it's under the consent agenda either, but I think we'll try to get that.
But as long as, as long as we're pulling things, that's what I would like to have pulled.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to let Council Ripley go first, Council Ripley?
Yeah, this check to Garrison Law Offices, how far back does that go? Does that go back to 2021? Do you know?
It's my understanding that some of them were from 21.
Uh huh, and?
So some of the cases, what happened was, is some of the cases, it took several, like a year or two, to actually hear the cases. And so, and I think it was during the COVID time that they were getting carried over. And he had previously sent the information to the city, and I believe it was denied payment. And so I spoke with him, and I actually requested assistance from the court to verify his spreadsheet was correct, and it was, so I felt it was our duty to pay him.
Okay, but there was some, there was some pushback on that for.
Council Hancock, Council Ripley has the floor at this point, she's got a couple.
There's another question.
So.
Okay, let's see, on the second one, it was to the Educational Center Radio, that was for Anti-Opioid Campaign. Is that the radio station from Granger? And it says that it's seven of 12? Is that seven of 12 payments?
Correct, Vanessa actually brought this to me today. It is a contract that was apparently signed previously, and so due to the contract, we're obligated to finish paying the contract out. And so there is more payments that will happen. It's a year-long contract that was paid by the previous administration, made by the.
Correct, and this was an opioid settlement that the city received, and part of that was public service announcements on radio stations, and one of them was KDNA.
Mayor, I believe Vicki has the floor.
Council Hancock, you are out of order.
I'm not out of order, you are. Okay, thank you.
Council Hancock? That, that is correct, that's a year-long contract for that service, so with the opiate money. It was $5,000 in total.
The $5,000 wasn't paid all at once?
No, it was on a monthly basis for.
It's monthly payment?
Okay, okay, thanks. And Monica, back to the Garrison thing. That, that was billed to the city in December of 2024, at a minimum, before that. And then again, and it wasn't paid. And we were at jeopardy for having this be double. What if we did not pay it, and it was correct? We were at jeopardy of being double the cost of what we were billed. And the original bill to the city was $4,000. But then, when the city didn't pay that, then more investigation, it was $26,000 that actually was owed to Mr. Garrison. So this could be a $50,000 judgment if we had not paid it. So I want to know how we're going to tighten up our controls. Because I just heard a few weeks ago that we were turned over collections for something that wasn't paid. So I want to know how we're tightening up those controls.
So that was all from the previous administration. Since then, we actually have all of our invoices scanned, and they're sent to departments through scanning and set it through paper. They're also CC'd to me, so that if anything is not responded to within a timely manner, then I will respond to the sent out messages so that I can keep track of invoices that haven't been addressed properly.
I do appreciate you getting this done. I think we were in jeopardy there for a while, so I appreciate it.
Council Hancock, you had questions about the payroll and the fire department?
Yes, I would like Mr. Bridges to address the public and council about what went on with the, if you look at the payroll vouchers, they, they look a little irregular. And so I just think we need some information out there.
So the, the sums that you see in the check register for payroll, that's based upon retroactive pay for, I believe, just 2024? Is it 2024 and 2025?
It's 2024 plus incentives for EMS.
Yeah, plus, and so, yeah, so, so you'll see another one coming for 2025. So that contract had lapsed in December 31 of 2023, and the city had not negotiated with the firefighters union. We did get that completed earlier this fall, and that was, the retroactive pay, I believe, is 4.5% for the year of 2024, 4% for the year 2025. And the paramedics, I believe, get a $3,000 lump sum. Instead of us trying to go back and figure out all their certifications, it's, it was easy just to make it 3,000 instead of looking for 2,900 and whatever the numbers. It would have been some weird number, but it would have taken a long time to figure that part out. So it was easier for us to say, here's $3,000 lump sum. So that's what those numbers are for. The number for the fire chief, I'll let the fire chief speak about that, if you don't mind, Chief Hubbard?
So the, on. Sorry about that.
There's the chair.
My apologies, so that's the.
The Geiger counter.
I, I don't know, I'm at a loss for that one. But again, that is the amount for the state mobilization, which is fully reimbursed, and then some by, by the state. So that is of no cost to the city. And we should have received that reimbursement in full, no event today. Say it was a cutoff for them to reimburse that full amount, plus, plus the extra. That, that is the incentive to the city for allowing me to go participate in these state mobilizations.
Those funds are paid back to us for state mobilization, plus the use of the equipment.
Correct, and, and I don't have an issue with that. I just wanted the public to know what was going on with the, the payroll vouchers, so.
And just so you understand, there will be three more. Retropays, the Public Works Department, Code Enforcement, and Planning are all outside of contract, and their contracts were just recently negotiated as well. So we will have to retropay all those departments as well.
Yeah, and, and I would like that explained each time we do this, so that people who are looking through the vouchers understand why that's the big jump, so.
Yeah, that is only one payroll, so.
Yep.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Councilors, have your questions been satisfactorily answered?
Yes.
Okay, very well. What is the desire of council on the consent agenda?
Can we have the, the budget?
Second.
Do you want, I'm sorry, Councilor, would you be all right if she's able to give that budget overview during her staff report?
That would be fine, that would be fine, thank you, that's probably.
That's probably more appropriate to that item on the agenda than. Okay, and I didn't catch which one of you made the motion, and Ms. Ripley made the motion. Council Hancock, second to approve the consent agenda. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none, Council Hart?
Yes.
Council Vasquez?
Yes.
Council Ripley?
Yes.
And Council Hancock?
Yes.
I two vote yes, motion passes. Active agenda, Community and Economic Development Commission presentation, Mr. City Manager.
I, I'm trying to share.
Item A, under active agenda.
Is the Community and Economic Development here, is that you, Hector?
So we do have a present.
We do have members, we have members here.
Yes, we have members here that are going to be.
Awesome.
I will turn it over to them.
You want to introduce them?
Oh, I'm bad with names.
Brittany Byam.
Byma?
Brittany Meyer.
Byma.
Byma, yeah.
Lisa Sandoval.
Alicia Sandoval. Letitia Sandoval, that is on our committee with Cory and I on the economic development, so.
Perfect.
I turn it over, sorry.
All right, Ms. Byma, Ms. Sandoval, welcome, and.
Thank you.
Where is yours?
Good evening, my name is Brittany Byma, and I have the privilege of serving as the Chair of the Community and Economic Development Commission for the City of Sunnyside. A few weeks ago, I distributed the Roger Brooks Study on the City of Sunnyside, accompanied by our correspondents, outlining our commission's intention to request funding for several economic development projects. These initiatives are designed to strengthen our local economy, enhance the city's visual appeal, and foster a more supportive environment for both existing and prospective businesses. Our commission has been diligently working to support local businesses, encourage new business development, and improve our overall economic vitality of Sunnyside. To further these efforts, we are respectfully requesting $50,000 in funding to assist in implementing projects such as wayfinding, signage improvements, beautification awards, small business education classes, and additional initiatives that promote community pride and economic growth. With the city's partnership and support, we can expand the resources available to our business community, strengthen local investment, and enhance the overall experience of those who live, work, and visit Sunnyside. Should you have any questions, comments, or recommendations, we welcome your feedback. Collaboration is vital to the continued, continued success of our shared goals. Thank you for your consideration and ongoing commitment to the future of Sunnyside. Brittany Byma, Chair of Community and Economic Development Commission, City of Sunnyside.
All right, council members, questions or comments for Ms. Byma or Ms. Sandoval? Miss Hart?
Since I've been, been, I've sit in on some of their, as long, Karen, Karen Vasquez, counselor, is, is the liaison to the actual.
Here she comes.
For the record, Council Vasquez has just arrived in person, so, welcome, Councilor.
In any case, I'll, I'll probably give it back to her, but I was going to talk just a little bit about, since the Economic Development Commission started, it's been two years, three years? Seems longer because of all the shifting around.
Turnover, that we've been the same committee the entire time, very dedicated, and we've spent hours upon hours, years.
Yeah.
Given it to our projects, so.
You know, and so the, the idea that it has been with Roger Brooks program that we, we've, we've looked at, we've paid for, you know, and we're now trying to implement some of those, the way signs was one of the things that we were trying to implement before. And I think that the money that they're asking for is, is, is really going to be used in such a way as to really make an improvement on the looks of the town and the businesses. You know, the revolving loan funds have been really, really successful, and we are getting in the, I can tell you about that, or Karen can, about how that's, that's working out. Very, for me, as having been really a big supporter of this particular commission, I'm, I've really been pleased with the, the hard work this, this commission has put in on, on all of the different things, you know, from getting money out to the people, getting the money back from the people. And now, but Karen, did you want to say something? Go ahead.
Yeah, so first I want to say hi, thank you guys for coming, Brittany and Leti. And so I had a question for council, actually. So I remember I actually reminded you all to make sure to watch the video, and most of these that you guys had. And so my second question would be, what, from all the ideas that Roger presented, what do you think that we should start with? And what can we start the momentum starting forward here in Sunnyside? That way, we can also give some direction to the commission.
Feedback is great, yeah.
Correct.
All right, council members?
Well, my thoughts are, you know, that it all sounds good. I don't know where we are on budget.
Yeah.
So it's going to come down to what we sit down with budget and decide for budget, what monies we have, what our priorities are. I always think community development is a big priority, but I need to see where the dollars go first. And I think that will be later on this week, so.
Yes.
That's my, that's my focus.
And I agree 100%, but I also have a question, like, when was this presentation done? Do you remember, Mayor?
Before the pandemic.
It was before the pandemic, so 2019.
2019.
And it was a very good presentation. If you had a chance to watch the video, it was, it was very well done, very informative, and the people who left out of there were very enthusiastic.
Yes.
So one, one of the things, and just in answer to your question, Council Vasquez, one of the things that I remember from that is we had discussions afterward, and Public Works said, you know, in the area of wayfinding signs, we can make some our own. So it's not like it's, like for the wayfinder signs, that sort of stuff. I don't know, you know, if the guys are still there that, that said they could do that and know how to do that. They had certain equipment that they could, they could make signs, or they thought they could make signs, I don't know. Hector, you might need to check into that again, but some of these things can be done relatively inexpensively.
Exactly, and wayfinding is one that's very important, because if we look across our neighboring cities, we do see that they have already implemented a lot of these suggestions in which the City of Sunnyside has not. And it's very important for us to also remain updated, and for us to make finding downtown, for example, easier and more accessible for our community.
Okay, so yeah, so that was just me jumping in, I don't know, council members have any other comments or questions on this? I do, Mayor. Go ahead. Mr. Stevens?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, among the things that we talked about too, and as far as being able to create a chamber of commerce, and I think there's still a committee working on that out of the commission, and looking towards some more organizational parts of that, because I think I stick my nose into that to do that. I know you're currently going to be doing some reviews for each of the people, each of the businesses that were involved in the revolving loan. I think we'll get some, probably some good feedback from that as well, we hope, to see how that worked, and would they like to try it again, or are there other businesses out there? What our hope was is that the money that we could, we'd get back from those loans, we could reinvest back into the community. And so that was one of the major, major, major points for us. And I'm wondering too, if we can, maybe, I don't know that the group has talked about it or not, but the possibility where some of these things are also, besides economic development, kind of tie in with, with tourism.
Absolutely.
And the wayfinder signs particularly, where, where, where do I find this? You know, you know, removing the ones that are confusing and putting up the brand new ones, I think, has to be like number one. And if we can get those inexpensively done by our lovely Public Works folks, that would be lovely. But the other thing was, I think maybe some of that money could come from LTAC. I don't know if we could get all 50,000, but maybe there's a way we can do some sort of public funds through the general fund, and also maybe from LTAC. There might be a way we could do some, some partnering there. It's just a, just a weird thought, but it's possible.
Yeah, we're super flexible and, and, you know, open to any recommendations as far as, you know, we just threw that number out there to be very broad in general, but yeah, absolutely.
And that's just one more, one more. And, and, and one of the things that people might want to remember too is when we were hanging, when we were going through distributing the, the revolving loans, most of those were 50,000. when we were going through distributing the revolving loans, most of those were $50,000 from the money that we were giving, that we were, you know, loaning out and has been coming back in. So there might be a way, you know, it's not like there's not going to be money available that maybe we can, but the money in those loans is particularly for business and economic development. Is that not right?
We were thinking about doing round two to do out, to give out the rest, the next round.
And actually, so those loans were actually given out with a very, very low interest rate, so some of them having 1%, 2%, 3%. So I've actually seen some of the numbers and we've been getting in return not so much. So by the time we do get a good amount back, it'll be a few years. So it's not like we can, we will be able to use any of that money right away because it'll take a while for it to even accumulate.
Councillor Hancock?
Yeah, I've, I've been on council since March. I don't believe we've had a report yet about the result revolving funds for the all of council to hear.
We have not. You are correct.
And my question is, how are we going to do this without having reporting back to all of council about these revolving funds? And also when we're talking about LTAC money, LTAC money is supposed to bring people from 50 miles around. They're already here, though I don't see the wayfinding signs are the answer to LTAC being wayfinding signs. Now, I might be wrong, but we'll have to run it before the auditors, but you know, we've always had this bringing somebody from 50 miles out. So, you know, we've got to be consistent on how we're applying this. But yeah, without any kind of report on who is paying back these revolving loans, the ARPA money, we just, we're just shooting blind here.
I gotta, sorry, can I interrupt? I got a report. Cory, actually, we finally got those numbers. Out of all this turnover of different employees and stuff, we haven't had zero, no feedback, so we just got it back. Thank you Cory. So we got that. We can give it out to.
That's good, but council hasn't got the feedback.
Okay, we'll get it out to you guys.
Yeah, there's been a lot of turnover in the finance department, which has been part of that problem. It just kind of got lost in the shuffle.
Yes.
And also when I threw the wayfinding signs out, that was as an example of something that could be done rather inexpensively. That's maybe not necessarily the biggest, the biggest priority. But at the same time, there are things that can be implemented from this Roger Brooks studies that are relatively inexpensive to the city that can be moved. I think one of the suggestions, for example, was some of the benches, you move them back towards right in front of the building as opposed to right in front of where the cars are parked, so that you can look at down the sidewalk as opposed to looking right at a parked car. That doesn't cost us hardly anything. There are certain things that we can do that are inexpensive to take positive steps in that direction. And some of the other things that are more expensive, we can, we can budget for, so.
Cool.
Councillor Hart?
Well, in reply to something, Ms. Hancock's motion or question about the, you know, what the money is doing. I know that on numerous occasions during the past, past year, I've asked for the money for the revolving loans, how that money was coming in. I know that at one time the previous finance director had told me that the money was coming in. It was coming in and so there's, I hadn't, we hadn't really sat down to find out who all was paying back, but money was coming back in at the 2% and 3% interest on those loans.
Six months we've been asking for those total.
Yes, we have been asking for them for six months at least. And so that, that expands over a number of different folks, so that's not anything, not a criticism.
I will say that they're not in the finance department. So none of the, all of that's kept actually in Cory's department. The finance department doesn't have any of that information.
No, but you would have the money is what we're trying, it should be.
No, it's all actually done through Open Gov in his department. It's, none of it's in the finance at all. They actually don't have any of it recorded in our accounting system, only the deposits. And it's not allocated to just revolving loans.
Well, let's.
I know.
So we will, we will take care of that. Obviously Cory and I will sit down and make sure that we update everybody with what we have paid back and what we received. And we'll all make sure that everybody's on the same page, obviously with finance, so they know what, what's going on and where we're at with it. So I will make sure that's a priority that will be done on Wednesday when I return, obviously, from tomorrow's day off. So I will make sure that, and then I will get the report to everybody personally and send it to everybody's email. So everybody's all aware of what's, what's out, what's been given and what's been paid back.
Sounds like fun.
And where it's at?
And where it's at, yes, correct, correct. And we will make sure that if there's anything, please reach out to myself and Cory and we will make sure we'll get you guys the answers that you guys need.
Councillor Hancock?
So Monica, if, if that's the case, and I'm not picking on Cory and Hector, but how are we doing this for the auditors if finance doesn't have anything to do with a monetary payback? Where are we sitting in this finance department with this not under your control?
I, when I started, I asked about it because I wasn't sure where it was at either.
What's going on here?
Somebody on the Zoom has an open microphone. Whoever that is, please, thank you.
And so it's my understanding when it was created, it was all created in Open Gov. And it wasn't, it was kind of shocking to me, but none of those payments were put into the accounting system to have an aging report of where those payments were. So they're all in Open Gov and then as they get paid, they're just put into a payment put into our accounting system. So I, when I came on, there is no records at all for any of those in the finance division. As far as I know, they're only in development.
Are we collecting 1% or 2% finance charge and all that kind of stuff if this isn't going through financials?
I don't know how they're collecting it.
And to clarify, so prior to myself and Cory coming in to our positions, I guess it was done by Trevor.
Yes.
Trevor and Dennis. So we didn't get much backstory. Obviously, we're doing the best that we can with obviously what we have. And like I stated before, we will make sure that finance has all records of ours and, and obviously of the council, so everybody's.
And I'm not trying to pick.
No, not one bit.
At all. I'm not trying to pick on staff. What I'm saying is we've got to get these controls.
Oh, no, very true. You are very correct. We should be able to get it controlled and, you know, and if you guys ask for it, we should be able to give it.
Well, and not only that, but we have to respond to the auditors.
Oh, most definitely.
So this is very disturbing to me that we, we haven't had this through finance. So I need this to come up right away, Jim, on the next agenda, so that we know we're getting it straightened out.
Councillor Hart?
This is the first time, and I've been on the committee since the committee was formed and since the loans have gone out. This is the first time I'm hearing that the money that was being deposited on the payments was not going to the financial department. And which is really odd to me because the previous finance director assured me that's where the money was going.
That's what we heard too, because she came in and assured us.
Assured us that that's where the money was. So why this is, we're getting two different stories we do need to sort out.
So.
Excuse me?
We've got, no, the audience does not participate in this discussion, so. Go ahead.
So I think what Ms. Hofstadter said is the money is being deposited into the finance department. But it's, it's, it's not coming with a paper trail, if you will, on what loans are being paid. And, and so it's just, it's just this lump sum of cash that's going in. There's no way for the finance department to track it. So I think Cory and Hector are going to work on that with finance and try to figure out how we get that. And so we know which loans are being paid, which ones, and so that is in the finance department. So when the auditors do come, I think that's the answer to that question, Ms. Hart.
Okay, thank you. Take clarification.
I have one question too.
Go ahead, sir.
And this is for the staff and for the committee members. Is there a budget breakdown or estimate of these various items if we are going to, you know, seek budget, budget requests for them?
I believe so. We've, we have been looking into the Open Gov. And I, I do have a book binder with everybody's application, so we can work on that.
No, wrong answer.
Wrong answer. Sorry.
The items that you requested a $50,000 budget for these items, the wayfaring signs and things, is there an estimate of each individual items?
We don't have that estimate right now. We're just shooting it as a general fund. So we could budget and obviously it'd be approved by finance and everything like that, but we don't have a estimate. We just wanted the blessing so we can get estimates or quotes, because I'm not going to get, you know, or we're not going to get estimates or quotes if we have $0.
And how long is it going to take for you to get that? Because we were having a budget hearing Wednesday, so the quicker we can, you know, pin some of these things down and get some dollar figures, the quicker that we can make decisions.
True.
And we didn't, I didn't know.
I have a question.
Councillor Vasquez?
So like in regards to wayfinding, right, is there something that we can do that hits a lower price rank?
We can look into it, public, if there were somebody that stated that we can do it, we can surely give it a whirl. I have no problem on doing what I can to see what we can do. Let me talk to my employees and see where, who's the artist and who can help us out to make it that much better or make it with a lower budget.
And that may be something that I'm remembering wrong, but I thought I remembered Shane saying something about, oh, we can do that in, in Public Works. We've got that to where we can do this. So I don't, I don't know.
I will look into it. I'll look into it and I'll make sure to get everybody an answer.
So we do have limited abilities to make signs.
Yes.
The biggest cost in sign making is the aluminum blanks.
Yes.
For signs. It depends on how fancy you want to get. If it gets too fancy, that's something that we would have to ship out. Our staff makes the signs for, for street names, things of this nature. If it, if it needs to be something different. I mean, colors are one thing, but if it needs to be, you know, artsy, it might have to go be farmed out and then your cost is going to go higher, so.
Okay, and I'm just asking to see if we even have the possibility of making it like in-house instead of having to get that, outsource it, because always outsourcing anything, especially as a government or tax, it's high, they're high numbers. So just anything that we can do to get something rolling, since nothing has started, I think would be really great. Just so we can start the momentum going, you know, like Brittany Byam has said, we really need to get started. And, you know, the 50,000 that she's requested, it's not something that we can assure them right now, of course, we're still going into budget season. But I'd like to ask council to just kind of like put that on the side, keep it as a side note and try to maybe, if possible, give them something to work with and to have that in mind, every single one of us.
Yeah, because wayfinding is not just the only thing. We have small business classes coming up that's going to start at the beginning of the year. So, I mean, just stuff like that, just to resources for small business owners, not just existing ones, but new ones to try and welcome them in so they can, yeah, start up a business in Sunnyside, so.
All right, well, thank you very much for your report. You've obviously ignited quite a discussion and there's a lot of areas that need to be covered. A lot of stuff has fallen through the cracks over the very tumultuous last year and a half. So we need to get that all caught up because as Ms. Hancock said, the auditor is going to be paying attention to it, so we had to as well. So we'll look forward to the next regular meeting when we're going to get better numbers on this. Thank you again, and thank you everybody for your questions and comments.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, councillor Vasquez, I'm going to ask a favor of you, if I could. We are down to one camera for our Zoom meeting and our live stream. And our IT technology guru would really love to have everybody on that camera. So we would like to ask you if you'd come sit over here between Ms. Hancock and Ms. Hart.
I'll take my purse off.
That way those who are watching the live stream or watch us on YouTube later on can see that we're all here. The two council members that haven't arrived.
Well, they'll just happen.
They'll just, if one of them shows up, then we'll have to wait.
They'll just figure it out.
All right, next item on the agenda, item B, the 2026 Ad Valorem. Adopt an ordinance approving the Ad Valorem property tax levies and refund for 2026. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. So previously staff presented preliminary budget information, including revenue projections to the city council at workshop on October 7th to 2025. Additionally, staff has reviewed the proposed budget with the finance committee on October 23rd, 2025, including the Ad Valorem property tax levy. Staff is recommending to council an increase in the regular property tax levy by 1%, which is the maximum allowed by law. The total maximum amount of request is $2,730,000, including the 1% increase of $27,188.14. These taxes support the general fund, which pays for public safety, fire and code enforcement. These governmental functions have been a high priority for city council for the last several years with the vision to create and sustain safe and vibrant community. Calculations are based off of previous year, new construction, annexations and refunds collected. The maximum allowed will differ than the 1% from the previous year. The actual allowed is an estimate from the collected and assumed collection from Jacob Tate, Yakima County assessor, who has verified the numbers with the finance director Monica Hofstadter and would gladly answer any questions if you have more. In addition to the regular levy, the city must approve the excess levy in the amount of 469,200 for the sole purpose of paying the interest and principal on the city of Sunnyside's general obligation bond. Also being requested is the approval of refund levy for collected taxes abated or canceled and recovered from October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025 in the amount of $37,300, excuse me, $37,765.15. Our recommendation is to adopt the ordinance approving the Ad Valorem property tax levies and refund for 2026. And if you have any more questions, we can certainly ask Ms. Hofstadter.
Council, questions or comments? The only comment that I would have is the 1% Ad Valorem tax is something that comes before council every year at this time. The state allows us to make a 1% increase in property tax levy every year. That goes to the general fund. That is not to fund a gap in any kind of financing or anything like that. That is something that has been done most years. In the years that I have been on council, it's been every year that that has been adopted. One of the things that I did discover is that when the state is replying to the city, we've asked for grants or some sort of funding help in some sort of areas, the state will ask, are you using and exercising every one of the opportunities you have to generate income? And if we don't do this and exercise every other opportunity we have, the state tends to say, well, no, try to look for finance in some of those other areas. So that's one of the incentives that we have. I know we've all seen our property tax assessment and have kind of had to sit back and pick our jaws up off the floor. And that's not pleasant for anyone either, but yeah, this is, this is not something out of the ordinary that the city does. It's not a new tax, like I said, it is something that comes up before us every year at this time. So council members, is there any other comments or questions on this item?
It's not a new tax, but it is an increased tax.
It is an increase, yes, it is.
And it is a very small amount. It helps us to keep up with the cost of living. It's, taxes are not my favorite thing, but this is one that generally really doesn't need a lot of explanation because it's a very small amount. It helps us to keep up with our cost of living, like I said.
Further comments? Hearing none. What is the desire of council on this item?
Move to adopt the ordinance approving the Ad Valorem property tax levies and refund for 2026.
And I'll second.
All right, motion by councillor Hart, second by councillor Vasquez. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none. Councillor Ripley?
Yes.
Councillor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councillor Hancock?
Yes.
Councillor Hart?
Yes.
I two vote yes, motion passes. Item C, Brunch with Santa and Spirit of Sunnyside Awards Dinner and Auction sponsorship. Approve a resolution authorizing the city of Sunnyside to sponsor the Brunch with Santa event and the Spirit of Sunnyside Awards Dinner and Auction, including the provision of facility use, purchase of awards and authorization for staff installation and removal of event equipment. Mr. City Manager.
And again, this is, this item was prepared by the city clerk. Is there anyone here from the Sunnyside committee? No? Okay. So the city of Sunnyside, we met with those folks here last week. The city of Sunnyside would like to sponsor two Miss Sunnyside Committee events. Brunch with Santa on December 7th, 2025 and Spirit of Sunnyside Awards Dinner and Auction on April 25th, 2026. Sponsorship includes, excuse me, providing the Sunnyside Community Center at no cost, purchasing awards and authorizing city staff to assist with the event setup and tear down tables, chairs, drapes and related equipment. Brunch with Santa is a longstanding community tradition that offers families a festive holiday meal and the opportunity to meet Santa Claus and participate in holiday themed activities. The Spirit of Sunnyside Awards Dinner Auction serves as both a major fundraiser for the Miss Sunnyside Scholarship Program and an event that recognizes individuals who demonstrate outstanding service, leadership and commitment to the city, to the Sunnyside community. Through this resolution, the city of Sunnyside authorizes the. Through this resolution, the city of Sunnyside authorizes the use of city resources, including facility use, staff support for setup and removal of equipment and allocation of funds for awards and related event expenses to support these community focused events. Uh, staff's uh, recommendation is to approve the resolution authorizing the city of Sunnyside to sponsor the Brunch with Santa event and Spirit of Sunnyside Awards Dinner and Auction, including the provision of facility use, purchase of awards and authorization for staff installation and removal of event equipment.
Counsel, questions or comments? Counsel Hancock.
Um, I, first of all, I would like to, to uh, put this off until Jackie comes back and we have more information. Amount of expenditure says varies. We don't have an amount that this is gonna cost us. We are in a budget year and a budget crunch. Um, I'm concerned about um, the gifting of public funds when we're giving this community center at no cost, purchasing awards and authorizing city staff to assist with setup, tear down. Um, if, if we're not, the, the Spirit of Sunnyside is a little bit different where, where that has to do with the city, but the Brunch with Santa um, to benefit the Miss Sunnyside Committee, and I love the Miss Sunnyside Committee, but I'm afraid we're treading on gifting of public funds when we're, when we're doing this and there's no other funding source. So um, I have some um, very big questions about this.
Well, thank you. Counsel Hart.
Um, I think we've done this uh, both with the uh, I'm not sure about the breakfast with uh, the Brunch with Santa in the past, but I know the Spirit of Sunnyside, we've done the, the very thing of providing of the facility use, purchase of awards, authorization of staff to do the installation, removal of, of uh, equipment. Um, event equipment, we've done that before for the Spirit of Sunnyside Award. I think the previously, I believe the breakfast with, uh, Brunch with Santa was held at the Sunnyside High School. And I think maybe they're expecting um, a different, different kind of more people coming and that's why they wanna have it at the uh, community center. Uh, but I would like to kinda know what those numbers were from last year. And if I'm mistaken on the Brunch with Santa, I, I know the Easter Bunny we always have at the community center and it, and the same thing applies. Cause we put it as part of the Parks and Rec program, I think. Um, maybe the breakfast, uh, but I'm not sure. So I would, I would be willing to wait and see what uh, Jackie has as far as what those fund numbers are. But I, I do support this particular recommendation.
Counsel Vasquez.
Yeah, I choose. So for like, for example, the Spirit of Sunnyside, I'm all for because that is on behalf of the city of Sunnyside. Um, the Brunch with Santa is new, so I would just want, even like the, a breakout would be nice of how much are we looking at if we were to provide the community center? How much would we be gifting per se, but not technically gifting, but more like sponsoring? I would like to see those numbers just so we have an idea of how much is going to be, how much the city is going to be sponsoring um, these other programs.
Okay. Further comments, questions? Counsel Ripley.
I feel the same. I, I'm okay with the Spirit of Sunnyside, that's every year, but the brunch, I would like to see the numbers.
So the uh, feeling I'm getting from councils, we'd like to push this back to our next regular meeting and we can get better information from our city clerk when she's here and get some of these questions answered and get more specifics on what the costs might be. All right. Do we have to do a motion on that or?
I think, can we just, just have it taken off the agenda and, and forwarded to next week, to the next general meeting? Do we have to make a motion to that effect?
I think we can, I, I think.
Well, not take it away. I think maybe like table it and.
I think the consensus is to table it for the next meeting and I think that's what we're, that's what we're talking about. And so let's, let's do that. Let's move that to the next regular meeting and we will get better information and we can make a more informed decision. All right. Item D. Amending chapter six dot zero four SMC and adding the new article seven, establishing regulations for dog breeding and the sale of dogs. Adopt an ordinance amending, as I just read, chapter six dot zero four of the Sunnyside Municipal Code, adding a new article seven, establishing regulations for dog breeding and the sale of dogs proving for severability, providing, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Mr. City Manager.
I will turn this over to, is it Corey or Hector? Hector?
So I've been working on this ordinance for quite a while since I started. Uh, this is an ordinance that was brought to me um, uh, by obviously Deputy Mayor Gavon. Uh, Ms. Medina I've been working with, uh, she's been a very great help whilst I was looking into this and working into the dog catching, finding a, a place where we can put these dogs. But uh, so I've had our attorney look at this ordinance and basically I am asking to amend the chapter as the mayor stated, chapter six uh, point zero four, the M, SMC and adding the new article seven, established to uh, regulations for dog breeding and the sale of dogs. Uh, I can answer your questions if you have any.
Counsel, questions for Mr. Mejia.
Mr. Mejia, was this, um, this was brought to you by um, Ruby Medina and others, and this is fashioned after Benton City, is that?
No, ma'am. This was, uh, I, I believe uh, Deputy Mayor Gavon had worked on this prior. And um, and I think it just, I was at a standstill. Um, I, I read over it and I've sent it to uh, our attorney to make sure that everything is correct with um, the language, so we won't be missing anything, misintrued or misunderstand any of the language that's in here, so.
Did, did you use another city ordinance to come up with this one?
Uh, no, then, so I don't believe, I, I never did, but I don't believe Mr. Gavon did, uh, Deputy Mayor Gavon. Um, I know that he was working on it prior to my arrival. And like I said, I sent it up to uh, the attorney to make sure the language is correct and.
And the fines that we're saying we're levying, where, where are those contained?
Yes, ma'am. So the fines are, I have it right here, um, section three adoption of six point zero four point four five. The city hereby adopts the new section of chapter six point zero four, SMC Dog Control to provide for its entirely or set forth below. Um, the penalties on section A, any person found in violation of section six point zero four point four four zero, the SMC shall be subject to a civil penalty of up to a thousand dollars per violation per day. Each day that a violation continues shall constitute as a separate offense.
How do we decide up to a thousand dollars?
Uh, I believe um, um, the attorney had looked at it and um, I, then that was already in there, so.
Actually.
Okay, Counsel Hart.
Actually, um, in answer to Counsel Hart, uh, Hanford's uh, question. Uh, the uh, we started working on the dog sale and breeders portion of the ordinance about almost uh, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four. So uh, Deputy, Deputy uh, Mayor Gavon has been looking, had looked at a number of different ordinances regarding this. So I think maybe that thousand dollar and the uh, uh, fine for each violation came out of some of his research that he found with other cities. So some of this language that's going into this one came, came as a combination and he put that pretty much together and, and I, until, you know, and then it was till you got to it and get the legal aspect out of it. But it has been worked on for more than a year and a half, I know for certain.
Okay. Counsel Hancock.
Um, that still doesn't answer my question. My question is, how do we determine of shall be subject to a civil penny, penalty up to a thousand dollars per violation per day? We need to have a more specific ordinance than, than up to a thousand dollars per violation per day. Um, so I, you know, it, it, it may have been worked on for a long time, but until it's right, we don't wanna pass it and have this be in the air, so.
Most definitely. And I can work with uh, Mrs. Norton and uh, Deputy Mayor Gavon uh, to get a clarification on how, and, and that way we can clarify it and make it correct.
If, if I can help out with this, that's pretty standard language for any civil violation. It gives you the maximum uh, penalty that you can assess, but you can decide administratively um, with your, with your officers or your, your enforcement individuals, what amount you actually want to assess, whether you start at two fifty and whether it's somebody that's got repeating violations. It, it sets the maximum. So you have discretion to decide administratively how you want to work up to that maximum. But this is pretty typical code enforcement language.
Okay. And Julie, who would, who would be enforcing that?
Uh, whoever you, either whoever does your animal control, your code enforcement, um, whoever writes your citations for, for animal related offenses.
Okay, Counsel Hart.
And sometimes, sometimes these violations are maybe, you know, when you're going out and the code enforcement or the animal, animal control person sees it the one time, says, come on, you, you know, you can't do this, come back, but you're still doing it, it's still a violation. Maybe that's when the first fine starts because there's maybe a warning, then there's a a fine for not taking care of it, up to the thousand dollars. Is that how you would see it, Julie?
That's correct. That's usually how code enforcement works. Your first offense, you kinda get a warning, second offense, you get a lesser penalty. Extended offenses, you get more, more penalties. The problem is when you start writing, um, writing specifically, your first offense is this, your second offense is that, you start to challenge, well, was it first offense within a year, second offense within a year? This gives you a little bit more flexibility to evaluate both the circumstances of the situation and the duration in which these violations are occurring.
All right. Further questions or comments?
I would just argue that it should be more delineated. We should have more results than up to a thousand dollars. And um, a thousand dollars is a big fine. And so I think we should have it, I should, think we should work on this a little bit more.
Counsel Ripley.
I do see a typo under summary. Amend is spelled wrong. I would like to amend chapter six point oh four. It should be A M E N D.
Okay.
Okay. I will, I will get that corrected.
Okay. Ms. Vasquez.
Yeah, and so for me, from me, I would like to see if, once we do get this sorted out and voted through, for there to actually be accountability also on our city enforcement or dog control person who will come in soon, cause I know we don't have anyone right now. But for this to actually be, like for them to actually cite these penalties or for there to actually be communication with our residents. Because as of what I've seen so far, there hasn't been. And there hasn't been anything that's been in our community where, cause, and I say this because I've seen it, where I've helped get a dog for some people and the dog's out every, like once a week and who's, who's following through with this? And in order for it to even gain some respect and for people to actually wanna follow these new codes and SMCs that are going to be moved forward, then we actually need to also implement them. Because if not, then the city's gonna continue to look like a joke and people are not going to be respecting these.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
And can I add something there? So um, and I'm probably gonna say something pretty controversial here. Um, there are a lot of dog breeds that sell for more than a thousand dollars a pup. So I, I think if we're gonna, i- i- in my personal opinion, it should be the cost of the puppies they're selling. That should be the fine. That'll stop them. If you wanna sell a puppy for four thousand dollars and you got a litter of six of them, we're gonna find you, that, 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 that's how I would do it. Um, thousand dollars, well, I'm getting four thousand here. You know, I just made twenty-three off of six pups. So, you know, I, I, I'm just saying it. Um, I, I'm, I'm a, uh, animal lover. Dog breeding is, I think is wrong, it's inhumane, uh, to just carry on. And so I'm just saying, that's my opinion. I don't know what direction we wanna go with staff. I mean, a thousand dollar fine is not, nothing to sneeze at. But dog breeds go for thousands and thousands of dollars.
Exactly. Even for them to continue to obtain their license.
Can I maybe suggest, sorry to interrupt you, maybe suggesting, because you don't have anything on your books right now that would prevent dog breeding and you're gonna continue to have this problem while you work on what you want the penalty to, to be. So if, if you wanna enact the prohibition, you could always adopt the ordinance and then do a subsequent change or amendment when you further refine the, the fee schedules. Just a suggestion. Um.
And I'll, uh, and I would, I just wanna uh, just speak about this. And it, if we don't have, I'm just trying to get an effective date, like we don't have, we can adopt it and then say on this date, we can start once we got, get a dog catcher and have somebody, like you stated, to be able to enforce this. Um, because yes, that is the problem, that if we, we can't follow through with the follow-up, then like Ms. Hancock said, it's, it's gonna be a joke. And I don't, we don't want that for the city. We wanna be able to enforce something that's, and follow through with it. Um, like Mr. Bridges said, you know, the thousand dollars was on there. Um, but it, it could be a drop in the bucket for the person who's breeding these dogs, correct? Um, if you want, I can rework on this. I have no problem when we're working on it and making it so, once we get our teeth into it, it, it hurts. And it's not something that someone's just gonna say, oh, well, it's, it's just a, you know, whatever I want. So uh, I'm willing to do that. I mean, if that's the council's direction, I have no problem on that to make it, to make it work and make it work for all of us and not just somebody who can just bat an eye at it, so.
Counsel Hart.
Well, I'd like to call for the motion. I wanna call for the adoption of the ordinance amending chapter six point oh four of the Sunnyside Municipal Code and adding a new article number seven, establishing regulations for dog breeding and the sale of dogs providing for s- s- uh, word is? Serability, providing for serability and establishing an effective date. Um, following the publication of this ordinance.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second. However, I, I do just want us to not forget to go back so we could work, continue to work on this.
I will continue to work on it.
Yeah. At least we can have it.
So we have a motion by Counsel Hart, second by Counsel Vasquez. Is there debate on this item?
Yeah, I do not.
Counsel Hancock.
I do not want to put anything on the books that isn't ready to be on the books. And I don't think this is quite ready to be on the books. I have been in support of the dog breeding um, ban, but I think that we need to further um, define and um, look at this issue uh, rather than just pass um, an ordinance to pass an ordinance.
All right, thank you. Counsel Hart.
And, 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 and objection to that or a debate to that is, is that getting the ordinance on the books now, at least it gives the code enforcement folks a law that they can start working with. If we need to, if we need to change it, we can always come back and make an addition to it. And I think that's the only thing that we're, we're questioning is whether or not there ought to be an addition as far as what the fine might be for civil. Cause it's a civil thing. Is that not right, Julie? Ms. Norton, where are you at?
That's correct. Yeah, it's a civil, it's a civil penalty.
So if we have, if we have it on the books, it can begin to be enforced. We already have a fine set up up to a thousand dollars. And as we said previously, that, that amount of money is just one pup maybe. Um, but nevertheless, I think we need to get it on the books so we know that people are, that we're gonna be, we're gonna be coming down on dog breeders and on the sale of animals, dogs.
Counsel Vasquez.
Yes. So in, in regards to that, um, who would be implementing these right now?
The court, court enforcement, maybe?
Maybe code enforcement?
It would not be code enforcement because code enforcement doesn't have the training and they're, that's why I stated, um, if we can if we want to move forward with this, we have the effective date after the beginning of the year because I would like to get a dog catcher in that's gonna be able to enforce it. And we don't just have it on the books. We just, we wanna be able to back ourselves up and make sure that we have some teeth when we, you know, talk to people. So um, again, if, that's why it states on here, uh, establish an effective date. It's not something that we have to establish today. It's on this, on the near future of this date, we are going to continue with it, so.
Are we currently talking to anybody about the ACO position?
So um, I believe Chief Layman has been talking with the, the city of Yakima. Of course, you know, with the elections, um, there may be some, some folks that they're gonna be letting go, uh, that are already gone through the uh, uh, Animal Control Officer uh, Academy. Uh, and that's, that's what we're looking for.
Okay.
So, and I'm not singling out city Yakima, there may be other folks out there, but.
I saw a hand up here. Counsel Hart.
So that makes sense to me. Go ahead, get it on the books. Have, have the fines set where it is, have the effective date as, as, you know, as, as soon as, as soon as we're able to hire the ACO. Or, I'm sorry, Ace, yeah, so ACO.
Okay. Counsel Hancock. Okay, Councilor Hancock.
Now, so so just to get this straight, an accidental litter that somebody has could be fined up to a thousand dollars, not not a designer dog, an accidental litter. So that's where I see that we need a little more delineation in this. If if we have an accidental litter and we're going to find them a thousand dollars or they're selling them for $4,000 each and it's a thousand dollars.
No, you are correct. And like I said, I am willing to clarify it. And if we can, I mean, my suggestion is we table it till I get clarification. And that way, it's all up upfront. So I am, I'm willing to work on that if the council would like to direct me that way.
Councilor Hart.
I would, I would move to table the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, however.
We do have a motion and a second.
So we have to vote on that.
So let's go ahead and do that and then we, we know where it's going to go.
Before we do that, I'd like for the language, you know, to be added on to this where it could be easier for our community to understand as well that it's not just dog breeding, the expensive, you know, like French dogs or so this is also for accidental litter. So that could be added on.
It's already in there. So the the definition that's that's being proposed to change to dog breeding, and this was a specific question that I asked Hector when we were working on this, is do you want to actually prohibit all dog breeding or just intentional dog breeding? And my understanding was the feedback he got from the council was that all dog breeding, including negligent. So it in the definition of dog breeding that is being added, it says any act resulting in the reproduction of dogs, whether intentional or due to negligence, including but not limited to breeding for profit. So it's going to cover your accidental litters. This is where the up to a thousand gets you something. If it's somebody who oops, just had a litter, maybe the warning is sufficient, they'll find a way to to get rid of the dogs without having to profit from them or anything. But if it's somebody that's, oh, I just accidentally bred another set, now you're looking at more extensive fees and whatnot. So it does, that's why there's the sliding scale for fees in some ways, but it does cover the negligent and the intentional.
And also that's the dogs that are not going to be just sold for profit, also those that are not. Because those are the ones that are just thrown out in the streets.
Correct. It's meant to curtail any breeding of dogs. And so it's your responsibility to be careful with your animal to make sure that it doesn't result in a litter that will be a feral animal at some point.
Okay.
Okay, further comments or debate? All right, let's see where we are. All right, Councilor Hart.
I'm going to vote yes.
Council Vasquez.
Um, I'll do yes.
All right, Councilor Hancock?
Nope.
Do you have a Council Ripley?
No.
All right, well, that leaves me in the middle there. And I'm going to vote yes. In the opinion of the chair, the motion passes. But we all agree that there needs to be some revision done to this and some clarification. So the motion will pass. There will be a date in the future where this will take effect. And there will be some work and we're looking forward to seeing the modification and trimming up of some of the edges on this. So.
Yes, I will make sure to take care of that. And I will, if council would like, I can send it to them for them to review it and then prior to us, coming back after we get it all clarified.
That would be wonderful.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item E, we have omitted from the agenda. Next item is item eight, item from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. We have, we have the clerk setting up appointments to meet with folks who wish to be on the housing authority board. And we'll get back to you once we've conducted those. Other than that, I don't have anything that has been placed before us that we had for discussion. So the next item will be the council request status report.
I don't think we have that included in our pack and the clerk isn't here to pull it up, so.
Okay. And Mr. Mejia, do you know of any progress that's been made on any of the items on there? I mean, obviously, we've had the dog breeding one that's come before us this evening.
Yes, stickers are are here. We, we were short on some of the stickers, but we are on Wednesday, we'll be starting to place them on all all the rest of our public works department vehicles.
Yes, Public Works Department, Hector?
Yes, ma'am, because obviously under the police and fire, they are insignia on there. And obviously, if they are undercover, we cannot just put.
Right, but there is also city hall.
No, city hall, yes, correct. Yes, ma'am. Public Works City Hall vehicles. And yeah, we will get those taken care of.
Information technology, all those things.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody that has a vehicle?
Yes, ma'am.
All non emergency.
All non emergency vehicles will have them on there. So. The temporary vendors, I believe all we needed to send it, I'll let Cory talk about that.
Oh, we're just working on the revision still on that from our last state session.
Okay. What's the next one, the Yellowstone Trail?
So the Yellowstone Trail, yes. So with council permission, I've talked to Mr. Bridges. I would like to be able to be part of the Association of the Membership of the Yellowstone Trail. The city, sorry, not not me personally, the city, sorry. The city will, I would like to provide the city be able to be part of the membership application. Obviously, there's a one year, two year. And I was thinking champion, which is a hundred dollars for one year or a two year membership at champion would be $200. If the, and then we, I bought, ordered to sign through the Yellowstone to be able to put at the Yellowstone Trail. So. If you have any questions, I.
What does the membership get us?
The membership will get us, it will, it is join the Yellowstone Trail Association, be informed and take part. Learn more about the Yellowstone and its history, related events throughout the online newsletter. The Arrow will tell us about the Arrow and then news events related to Yellowstone can be found on our, will be part of the Facebook page.
Councilor Hart.
One of the things that I know, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for sending out the information about the Yellowstone. That was really interesting to read all of that stuff and and find out about what the membership actually will provide us with. I've talked with, recently talked with a member of one of the local car clubs and they're very excited to be participate in some fashion with with this particular activity, this park, this little pocket park we're trying to talk to arrange for. They said, you know, and I think in the Yellowstone information, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was also, it showed where you could just get on the Yellowstone at any place and drive it. There's routes and the car car club guys I talked to were really excited about that. So I think we can drum up some real enthusiasm as we're going along. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, and I am working on hopefully getting a banner for us that shows the map of the Yellowstone Trail.
Cool, cool. Thank you.
All right, the next one is temporary vendors without permits. I think we talked about that, didn't we? Working on that. Farm Implement Machinery.
I have made contact with insurance.
Okay. Boys and Girls Club?
Same.
Okay, Community Center.
I met with another soccer, indoor soccer, that would like to use our community center as a practice center. I have not received any information on when they would like to start this. Or Mr. Oscar.
That's Ken Harper.
Uh, Oscar and his wife, they have not came back or talked to me about them able to use the community center also for their tournaments or any practices or anything like that. So.
Is this just youth soccer?
This is youth soccer. I did state to them that adult soccer we cannot have in there because due to our basketball backboards that are, you know, stay down and I don't want them to break them or hurt themselves if they hit the soccer hard or anything like that. So.
Makes sense.
Okay. Safari Downtown Building?
Yeah, I haven't been able to make contact with the owner yet, but I did a site visit. The building is secure. The full roof is on it, doesn't appear to be deteriorating on the inside. I still have every intention to get ahold of him and take a look and discuss where it's going.
Okay. And then Allen Road, 16th Street intersection.
And I believe that we're just going to put that on our six year transportation plan.
Yes, that will be on our six year stip to get that taken care of.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Council members, other items that need to be added to our council request status form? Do you think of something? Go ahead, Councilor.
I'm just wondering if just for the sake of not, you know, keeping track of what's going to be happening, there isn't anything to report yet, but working on the two, America 250. Maybe not right, right away, but certainly we might want to add that to the status report as we get a little bit closer to formulating the committee.
I think, yeah, there would be a time when that would be added on so that we could.
Doesn't need to be denied, but just as we have it in our, you know, in our mind.
As our council rep, as you get information, please keep us all informed so that we know what's going on and.
I fully intend to do that.
Okay. Well, I spoke with her afterwards and she was very excited about your enthusiasm. So I think that's that's moving in a good direction. All right, upcoming council meetings. And the first one we've got is Monday, November 12. Okay, it's Wednesday, November 12, even though it says Monday. Wednesday, November 12, 2025, special meeting that will be at 5:30 PM here. And it's a special meeting that relates to our budget for 2026.
It says Monday.
Yes, but it is Wednesday. It's the day after tomorrow.
At five?
At 5:30.
Can I ask a question about that? I was just wondering, I see some faces out here that might be interested in the budget for 2026 if might want to make sure they.
Yes, and that was one thing that I was going to make an announcement before we left this evening. All newly elected council members are welcome to attend these budget meetings. Now, at this point, you won't be able to participate in the discussion. You're free to ask council members all the questions you want after the meeting, but you're not seated yet. But definitely, I would encourage you to be here and participate so that you know what's going on, so that you don't step in just absolutely ice cold in January and have no idea where the discussions have gone or the reason behind some of the decisions that have been made. So I would encourage you to be here. I know that before you're sworn in, it's already taking up some of your time, but I don't know how else to inform you of this, but council is going to take up some of your time. So best time to start getting used to that is now. But definitely want you to be here so that you have an idea what these discussions look like and the kind of stuff that we as council members and city staff members grapple with. So.
And we did prepare booklets for the newly elected, so.
And for.
And for those of us who are still.
For all the current electeds and all the newly.
Sure would like to have one of those.
That'll be distributed.
I didn't want to assume anything.
Well, all right. So the next one will be Monday, November 24 for our city council regular meeting. And that will contain most of the same stuff that we always have and Mr. City Manager met some of the other stuff that's on there. Do you have a?
Right, so for the Monday meeting on the 24th, we have the LTAC recommendations. We, the Pacific Corp franchise agreement that have, they have not gotten back to me after our last amended request. So that may be pulled. Chief Holbrook, FCS Discussion Group?
Talking to the other.
I'm waiting for confirmation from them. I've reached out a couple of times. I know they've got a pretty busy workload, but I have on my note on Wednesday, if I don't get an email back to very politely harass them.
Yeah. And then the Yakima County Fire District Five Automatic Aid ILA?
Yes, sir, that will be on there and ready to go.
And then the 2026 preliminary budget hearing, November 24.
Perfect, thank you. And council members, if there's anything that needs to be added to the budget, please make sure that you inform myself, the deputy mayor or city manager at least one week.
And then we need to add the item we pulled or tabled earlier.
The two items.
Yes.
Or the one item, you're right.
Sunshine Awards.
Yes.
Yeah. And do you want to do something with the Arts Commission as well?
Yes.
Yes, that'll be put on there as well. Good call. All right, other reports, announcements and or questions by council, and we're going to start with Ms. Ripley.
Yeah. At the finance meeting, we we questioned about Luis Lopez. He's been paid $26,000 and he was hired by the former administrator. And he was there from February till August and and we aren't quite sure what he did. 24 is not even reconciled. So that's something from Finance Committee. And I have a, somebody who got ahold of me about their water bill. And they're questioning why it keeps going up. He's only home from Friday, Saturday and Sunday, but his water bill, he sent me a copy of it. Who do I, who do I?
I will take care of that.
Okay. And and we had gotten years ago, I don't know if we're still sending that out, that's my copy. But I think that's a good thing to send out in the, in the with the water bill, yeah, because that's helped me to keep my water bill down. And. No, go ahead.
And can you share what the audit says?
Yes.
Yes.
Waters, winter average, sewer averaging each year, beginning with the November water meter reading and the ending with the February reading. The city conducts what is called the Winter Sewer Average Period. During this time, the bills for sewer discharge are based on the actual water meter consumption. At the end of the three months, November to February, a total is taken of the water meter consumption readings for the these three months. Then the total is divided by three to get the average consumption per month. The average consumption number is used to calculate the flat rate sewer charge for the next nine months. The purpose of this averaging is to eliminate the period of time when customers are irrigating their yards, washing cars, et cetera, which avoids their sewer bill ballooning from higher water consumptions, which is not being discharged into the city sewer system.
Yep, that is good information to get out to everybody.
That's, that's already in works. Mary, our utility billing printed all those actually this week.
Oh, good.
Brilliant.
Good.
That's taken care of. And there also will be a letter you'll see regarding the rates going up too. So.
And he's saying that his rates did or that his, it keeps going up. So he'll take.
There may, there may be another issue with that.
Yeah, it might be a leak, so that's why we send him.
Okay, and one more thing I wanted to ask Julie Norton is, have we seen the whole investigation? Or have we only seen parts of it?
You have the whole investigation report.
Okay.
Yeah, so everything that's on the website is everything there is.
Yeah, that's all there is. I did not request that he send any of the additional documents that are referenced. Some of them are public records anyway, that were filings in the other lawsuit. And then some of them were emails and things that Mike had given the investigator. I didn't find that to be relevant to what I need it for. So all I've provided the city is the report. And that's all I've seen. That's all the investigator has sent me.
Okay.
All right, Council Hancock.
I attended the Finance Committee here, meeting. And I think we've got some belt tightening to do, looks like. So we'll hear more about that. And that's all I have to report.
Council Vasquez.
Yes, so I also attended the Finance Committee meeting. There's a lot that's happening with the budget, so we'll see it all during budget time. And yes, I also agree, all the new elected be here, bring your notes. It's very, very, very important. Without those notes, you're going to be lost once you start. So no, take all the notes you can and that way we could all work together and more efficiently. I also wanted to give everyone a reminder, the Sunset Police Foundation is hosting a Thanksgiving meal giveaway for our community. So if you want to participate, you can donate $25. It's $25 to donate a meal to one family. So if we can all donate $25, you know, like $25, add it times that by the number of people who donate, that adds up real quick. So if we could all participate and that's us making a difference in helping out our community. I also attended, well, I'm also council liaison to the Community Economic Development. And as they were presenting today, I heard some comments from like Councilor Hart saying that, you know, the revolving loan funds, it's good, it was really great. And I. And I hear that and I do think it was good, but I would have to, and I just want to share this on the record with you all is that I personally am not in favor of this revolving loan fund. Just because I feel that there are better ways for us to help new business owners. I think being a business owner myself, I've seen like the, the struggles and the loops and all the work that it takes for a business owner to even open up a business. And, you know, I've seen some other cities around us and the way that they've gone about using the ARPA funds and, and in order to help our community and business owners. And I think there are better ways to actually help versus than to create another burden for these business owners. For example, one of the business owners who actually got money from the revolving loan fund, their business has closed and now they're having a burden of having to pay that back. Another, we see other businesses where they use these funds for, for many different reasons. And I also want to remind council and city manager that when we are using ARPA funds, there are certain speculations and certain requirements on how the money can be used. And I think it is very important for us, for us to also be following along and to make sure that all of this is being moved correctly. I've been doing some homework in regards to ARPA money and, and the revolving loan fund, and I've been seeing some gaps and all the gaps that I've been seeing isn't something great. And it's something that we should ask council members. I know we're really busy, but I've been kind of looking in there and some of the things are not looking so great. And I think that moving forward, we just really need to make sure that we're meeting every requirement. And, you know, we're not going to have any more ARPA money. There's, we have none, but just the fact that if we do get more money in the future and it has certain requirements that we're not violating any of them.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilor Hart.
And just in, just in comments adding on to, to that, Ms. Vasquez comments too, with the revolving loan program when we started that. We wanted it basically to be a loan program so that we could help others as we go down. We were going to use up the original ARPA money, which we did. We've used up the revolving money out of the for the loans. So anything that's coming back now is going to be city money wherever it's at. But there was, and, and I agree that I think that the end of this year, the end of next year is we have to have used all of the ARPA money in 2026. And I don't even know if there's any still out there that we still have budgeted in various, we need to make sure that we, when we're doing the budget, to make sure if there's any ARPA money left in any of those accounts still. So maybe that's something we can talk about during, during budget. The other, there was something else. Oh, I, as I mentioned earlier, I went to a trunk or treat event last week down at the Eagles and I was trying to get ahold of people who might be in support of the Yellowstone Trail. And as, as I mentioned earlier, there was, I got some real favorable response from the car, car fans, at least that one car. And I know that there are many others that kind of, you know, have their shows during the, during the, during the course of the year. The other thing was I've already started talking with groups about the America, Sunnyside 250 events. Might as well tag that in there. And everybody that I've talked to, I've got the over the hill gang interested in maybe doing a reenactment of the reading, the tape, the picture where we're signing the Declaration of Independence. So that might be something that happens, an apple pie contest, although there was some question about when good apples were available. But any case, but there's, but so we were trying to publicize that, get that word out on that as well. And so was very successful in some of that. Visitors, the food courts, the potential food courts out there this weekend as well. And they're very excited about getting their stuff all, all settled in and the way they want it to be. But other than that, I think the city is looking really nice. The, the Public Works folks have been doing a super job of keeping the streets clean and digging out the trees and seeing about whether we're going to get new trees or not. I don't know. That's a different program as well, but.
Thank you. I will pass that along.
Yeah. Please, please do. They've been working really hard. Notice that.
Council Vasquez.
So really quick, I want to add something just for a bit more clarification. So like the revolving loan funds, they were great. It's a good idea. It came from a good place, from the heart, from the committee, yes. However, I guess my comment comes from an example, Grandview. Grandview, they implemented a thing where if you're a new business and you're in downtown or you're anywhere within city limits, then you could apply for some money to help your startup and that would be $10,000. And you just have to fill out an application. What are you providing? How are you going to help our community and make Grandview better by being now a new business owner within the city? And the city of Grandview actually gave everyone $10,000. However, they divide that into like quarters. So just to reassure that they will be open and successful in the community. And then, so then they would then divide those $10,000 and give out the first quarter to the business owner and then also update with them. And then second quarter would come around, they'd give out the second portion of the $10,000 and then they would do a checkup with them. How, how, how is it doing business in the city of Grandview, for example? And what can we do to better your business? So there's communication and also portions of money being given. And it's actually being given, not being a loan. So there's a lot of different ways that these neighboring cities use these ARPA funds. And it's actually been something that's been more of an encouragement to business owners than a burden. So I guess that's where, for me, I'm not in agreement where like if, once we do start getting these, the money back for us to continue doing what we initiated, what we started with originally. I personally would like to create it for something more rewarding and more of an incentive to new business owners, because at the end of the day, they're investing in Sunnyside. So that's just for clarification, not that I'm saying it's not great, but just that there's better ways to go about it.
Certainly something, excuse me, certainly something to, that, that the commission can certainly look at and as direction from the council. If that's what the council wants to do with that money. They still, you know, we, I, I like that. I, I think however, we can best use it, spread it around. You know, it doesn't really do us any good in the bank. You got to spread money around to make it grow.
And this has been some of my thoughts, but I can't really share it there. It's more something like council in order for us to give direction.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things, you know, this was something that was council approved and anything that's council approved can be revisited, revised, changed, canceled, or whatever council decides to do because it is a council decision. So yeah, definitely it's something that, that can and should be revisited. And perhaps there's better ways to do what we've been trying to do. Our goal was to encourage business owners and help them out, especially post COVID. A lot of business owners struggled and I know of a couple of businesses in town where they were extremely grateful for that. It allowed them to do some things that otherwise they wouldn't have been able to do. But yeah, certainly some of your ideas as far as, you know, grants and parceling that out little bit by bit. It's all bears discussion. So as far as my council reports or whatever, tomorrow is Veterans Day. And tomorrow there will be a special event held at the Jerry Taylor Plaza there on 9th Street off, off of Edison. And I would encourage everyone to be there. Not because I'm going to be speaking, but rather because it is worthy of our time. We, we are there to honor, show gratitude and show respect towards those who served in our armed forces. On the 11th month, the 11th day, the 11th hour. So at 11 AM is when the event starts. I encourage you to get there early for parking sake, but yeah, check out the plaza, check out all of the monuments that are there, everything that's there. And let's show gratitude, honor and respect to those who have served in our armed forces. And that's what I've got. And Mr. Ridge's staff reports.
So last week I had a meeting with the Department of Commerce on the, those monies that we received. And we, myself and folks from the Capital Path, which is our lobbyist group, folks that went, took the previous council or took the council and staff over last year to get those monies. And about focusing those dollars where they really need to go, right? Those were kind of a broad scope items. There are some for the swimming pool, some money for the Centennial Square gazebo and some money for the Tina North Soccer Park. And so we, we talked about how do we, how do we focus those monies? More specifically, because there were some broad based items. And so a couple of those grants, we are going to ask for a change of scope for them. The monies will still be used for those same type of facilities, but for like Centennial Square, for instance, right? 275, I believe it's 275,000, 245,000, whatever that number was. You know, it, you know, electrical speaker system, stage, we're not going to tear up the gazebo in Centennial Square, right? So we're, what, what else can we do with that around that property? So we're asking, can we make those changes? And, and so they're going to work with us on exactly how we can spend those funds. So that's what that basis, that meeting was, and they were very amenable to that. There were, a couple of them were just administrative and those mainly did with Tina North Park. What we can do there. Instead of paving the parking lot, we can gravel the parking lot and put a, put a storm drainage system in because it's, it's not in there, right? But that storm drainage system wasn't announced in the document. So, so those type of requests that we've asked for. So that's what I did obviously with some other issues, you know, dealing with bargaining units and the budget and day to day staff. So Mr. Well, we'll start with Mr. Silva here since he's to my right.
Well, we don't have too much exciting going on, just our day to day projects and most of what we do is to support the other departments. So that's, that's where you'll see our efforts.
Mr. Taylor.
I just had a couple of things to add to my weekly reports that I emailed to everybody. It shows on there how many permits were issued, inspections done, how much money was collected. But it doesn't go to say how many active building permits we've got or how many active, you know, because there's sometimes a lot of space in between, you know, the footing inspection and a final inspection. So currently I've got 186 active building permits. Code enforcement records, he's currently working on 25 separate violations or cases. And then the land use records were at 16. So.
Six.
16 that, that are, yeah, haven't been completed. They're, they're in somewhere in mid process. So. And that was all I had.
Mr. Mahia.
For Public Works, I sent out my weekly memo. And we're very busy. I'm very busy with Mr. Taylor on our committees and we're working forward. So, thank you.
Ms. Hofstadter.
25 budget, the paperwork you received, I believe, shows what remaining percentages we would need to cover those items. In the general fund, our taxes for property taxes down, but that's just, that's normal in October, just because we're it's usually a month behind, so two months behind. So we're going to get the funds for the property taxes that were paid. And then that will bring it back up to normal. License and permits are up. Corey's been a busy, busy guy down there. They're actually up 67% over what was budgeted. So he's been very busy. Internal governor, government revenues are slightly down, but that's kind of expected. Those are grants and pass throughs. Charges for goods is where the majority of the percentage down is, and that's about 13.5% less than what was expected. Fines and penalties are exactly what they were projected to be. Departments within the general fund. They're still getting reallocated for 25. I've been working on the budget and it's been quite a challenge. I can tell you that every line item I have opened, there, there's allocations in there that are I don't understand them. For instance, there was five Public Works people being allocated to the HR department to be paid. And I'm not sure why. And I actually sat with chief over here and him and I sat this afternoon trying to straighten out the fire department's allocations because those were not getting allocated correct either. So the 2025 budget, the expenses and the revenues are correct. As far as you see in the bank account coming in and going out, the way things have been allocated and, and dispersed. I'm, as, I'm not really sure why they're being done the way they are. You wouldn't put Public Works employees in the HR allocation for HR to be paying Public Works employees. It's kind of the other way around. So. So as I'm going through this budget, I have to kind of undo everything to find where these employees are being allocated to, so I could put them in the line items they belong. Which really changes kind of the view of things. And then also reallocating like HR payroll, AP, all those into the allocations that they're supposed to be allocated to properly, because there is actually a method to cost allocating. You can't just split them up. So that being said, the overall budget is really doing a lot better than I think it could be. One of the biggest things I will say is having Jim in the helm has been pretty amazing. There's been some things that come across our desk and I'm sure Hector can tell you that when we see some of these items that come across our desk that are pretty big dollars and they're a pretty big sticker price shock, he will, whoa, whoa, whoa. We don't need those things. What do you, wait a minute. And he'll pick it apart and, and that's really actually been nice to have somebody who's really good in public works being able to know the city's infrastructure and being able to work in that realm because it's, it's much needed right now. So having that, I will say, is actually saving the city a lot of money right now. Some of the funds accounts that are going to be over are going to be things like your executive department because there was double payments going out of that. For 2024, I will say that we just went out for RFP to propose for a consultant company, a finance firm to come in and have a third party come in to clean up 24, do a forensic audit on it. And then also propose some changes that need to be made as far as that 24 is. I've started for 25, trying to clean up 25 as I'm doing the budget. And then also setting some guidelines into place as I've been working through some things.
Hey, Councilor Hart, does that answer your questions?
Well, the big one that I was interested in, and I think you mentioned it there, was that the budget as it is now, the money is coming in or being, coming in the way they're supposed to. And expenditures are being spent the way they're supposed to.
Yes.
I mean, you should be probably almost 75% in all, all your, all your general fund.
Right. You'd, right. In October, you wanted about 83%.
Eighty-three.
Yeah. And so some of them are a little higher than they should be and some are a little lower. So overall it's budgeting out. If you take a look at your spreadsheet, you can see, like I said, this is how much more we have to go to meet where we wanted to get within our budget. But you can see that our revenue is still higher than our expenses, which is always a good thing because we want to be able to roll into the next year having at least three months covered because you want to be able to make it to the mark where you see the property taxes and those taxes start coming back in.
That's to start the new year. For three months. Yeah, I appreciate you, you going over it more closely. You know, I mean, it, we can look at it, but sometimes to have the verbal put it to it and, you know, just like when you look at the payroll or you look at the claims. Sometimes just say, oh, the revenue is up and the expenses are down, but then they're not in the right spot or this or that. So it's really better to be able to say, so what's going on here? I know this, that's what the Finance Committee does, but they don't always, you know, coming from you, I think is a little bit, is better. So it just gives more credibility to that whole report.
And we're also, I will say the team is really great. One of the things that are lacking is just the understanding how to do reconciliations of fund accounts and, and kind of teaching them how to take ownership of some of this work and teaching them a little more. I think before, when people were at the helm of finance, they kind of hit a lot of that when I think it is really a benefit for the city if they're doing these things so that if I'm out, if somebody else comes in, then these things are still happening because it hasn't, these. because it hasn't, these reconciliations haven't been done for years. And so it's, it's really important to, for everybody to be really trained and know what they're doing.
Well, I was just, just going to ask a question in regards to training, because I know you've had some staff moved around, different spots and so forth. So I, I understand there's trainings for the finance director person, but there, are there also for your staff?
Yes, they take training every single month. One of the things that I.
Is that online or?
Online and in person. So I send them videos of different trainings that they have to do privy to their job. And then also, as a team, once a month, we close for lunch, and I provide lunch, and we sit down and we discuss like either projects or some of the things that we need to do as far as best practices. This last meeting, the IT team got to be the star of the show, because there's some things that are going to be changing, and it's really important for the teams to work with IT when, for instance, our time management system is no longer going to be supported, so we have to get a new time management system. Well, because it's not getting supported, they offered us the same price and then new equipment.
You explain that a little bit.
The time management system, so people clocking in and out. The program that they used in Jaffet probably is the, the techie over there that can describe it better. But, so the program we used is no longer available. It was bought out by a company called UKG, and it's, UKG is nationwide, and they're international, actually. And so when they bought it out, they're, they're phasing out the program that we have. And so in saying that they're phasing it out, they're no longer going to support it. So if there was any issues with timekeeping or with the program itself, they were no longer going to be supporting it. So they basically offered us the UKG version of what we have at the same cost as we've been paying. The part that we have to pay for is actually, we have to now get all new equipment. And so they offered the new equipment at a discounted 50% off price if we did it prior to, we made that commitment prior to next year. We're actually putting it in the budget for next year, but we don't have to pay it till next year, because that was one of the caveats that we made. Yeah. Well, we want to start the implementation process next year so that, that it goes into next year's budget.
I see.
And so it will start next year, and that, and we're going to take advantage of getting the discount now.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for all that extra. I appreciate that very much.
Other questions for Ms. Hofstadter? All right, thank you very much for your much more detailed explanation than you were anticipating. Steve Hobart.
Mark is not done. You got to, you called me out, you got to make clear the mis, misallocations were not fire department misallocations. Want to make that. So yeah, sent out my weekly report, just kind of an update. Year to date call volume is 3,752 emergency calls. That's not counting the four we've had since we've been in this meeting. Seen about a daily average of 12, or projected 2025. My math was not mathing, so what I sent out is a little low. We're looking at about just shy of 4,400 calls a year anticipated for 2025. Continuing to really, continues with, on the topic of training. It's been on the forefront of our main focal point for the last about year, couple of years. So proud to report right now, our year to date training hour volume is 3,109 training hours. So that stuff makes me.
Excuse me again, 3,000?
What's that, man?
3,000 hours?
3,109 training hours. So, something we're, we're pretty proud of, so. But other than that, I have to give my report and most certainly open for any questions.
Questions for the chief. Well, I've got to say, chief, is I'm impressed with those training hours. Keep it up.
Thank you. It's a lot of hard workers.
Yes.
That's all you have? That's it? All right. Thank you, everybody, for your reports, and thank you for emailing those out, because that is helpful for us to know. People do ask questions. You know, sometimes I think we work in our own little cocoon, and we don't know that anybody else is paying attention, and somebody's going to ask questions, especially about public work stuff. Hey, what was going on here? What was going on there? Why did that happen? And, and that sort of stuff. So I appreciate those reports. It is helpful. Next item on our agenda is an executive session. We're asking for 15 minutes. The executive session is pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101C to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of decreased price. However, final action, selling or leasing public property shall be taken in a meeting open to the public. No action is expected. Yes.
Julie, are we going to have, I see Ken Harper's online. Did he need to speak to his subject as well, because we need to add that to the executive session?
Yeah, yeah, I had to, I wasn't aware you were going to be talking about real estate. I was only anticipating the legal, both Ken and I have legal updates.
Okay, I don't even have that on my.
We don't have that on the.
Here, so.
Do we need to cite that, RCW?
Yeah, it would be RCW, an executive session under RCW 4231101. Oh, is it I, to discuss with legal counsel, potential litigation affecting the agency.
Okay.
And.
Considering you've read that into the record.
What amount of time he needs. I need like one minute.
Okay. Very good. Well, consider that you've read that into the record then, and that is also pertinent to this particular executive session. So thank you, audience. We do hold these, try to hold them at the end of the meeting so that audience members don't have to wait outside for the rest of the meeting to happen. Thank you for being here. Yeah, whoever's the last one out of staff, just, or behind you?
My name's George Galvan today.
Yeah.
Are we ready? All right, we're back in open session. There was no action at the executive session. And we do have one question before we adjourn. Counselor Frausto did not show up, and I did not receive a request for an excused absence, so that would automatically mean that she is absent without excuse. And council is nodding in agreement. Let that be on the record as well. So without any further business to come before council, and without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Eight, twenty-nine. All right.